Okay.
What's in it?
All right, we're back in regular session.
Yes, back in regular session, we took no action in executive session. I should say the executive session resulted in no further action to be taken today by the Board of Supervisors. There were two votes in executive session. This regards the matter that the county attorney mentioned before going into executive session that transpired at the October 2021 regular board meeting. There was a vote on whether to table the matter for a future meeting that failed. And there was a vote as to whether to accept a report prepared by the county attorney and myself. And that also failed. So there was no action further to be taken by the Board of Supervisors on the matter.
County attorney, you have any more?
The only matter I did skip over initially is that the Board of Ethics did meet in February for their initial meeting. And individuals who have not filed financial disclosure forms will be contacted by the county attorney's office over the next week. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, move on to the next, reading communications.
Warren County Probation Department, monthly reports of criminal and family workloads for the month of December 2021. I'm sorry, 2021, yes, 21. Adronic Park Local Government Review Board, 2021 Statement of Services. Cornell Cooperative Extension, 2021 Annual Report. Lake George Park Commission, 2021 Final Report on Lake George Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention Program. Capital District Regional Off-Track Betting Court Financial Report, dated October 31, 2021. Letters from Fitzgerald Morris Baker First, Noticing Public Hearings Regarding the Brookfield Power Project and the Fort William Henry Corporation Project. And Washington County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 42 of 22, Appointing Members to the Counties of Warren and Washington Industrial Development Agency and Civic Development Corporation.
All right, reading of resolutions.
Resolution numbers 40 through 108 and two proclamations were distributed to the board and posted to the Warren County website on Tuesday, February 15, which met the distribution deadline specified in the rules of the board. Resolution number 68 was amended after mailing, and those revised copies were distributed to earlier. There was also a third proclamation distributed this morning as well. Do you need a motion to approve the revisions to Resolution 68?
Do we have a motion to approve resolutions? Resolutions to Resolution Number 68, that is. Yes.
So the Resolution 68, that's the rules of the board. We had amended it to increase the number of positions that the sheriff was authorized to fill. When that came to you, it was copied from the rules of the board from earlier this year, not the ones that were amended already. So we just had to go in and fix it. For instance, one of the changes said that we still needed a two-thirds majority to amend the rules. So we just updated it. It was just the resolution was copied forward incorrectly.
I'll move. Move back. We have a move by Supervisor Dixon, second by Supervisor Thomas. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both, Gary.
Yep, there are eight floor resolutions in your packets. None of those were approved by standing committees, so waiving of the rules are required to consider those. The first one is waiving of the rules for floor resolution number two.
Do we need a motion? Motion to waive the rules, motion by Supervisor Conover, second by Supervisor Wild. Waive the rules, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gary.
Okay, so floor resolution number one is now resolution number 109. Next is floor resolution number two.
Do you want to make a motion, bring that forward? Motion by Supervisor Fraser, second by Supervisor Bramer. Twenty members, the ARPA Advisory Committee to fill the vacancy due to resignation. Do you have a motion, second all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Opposed, Gary.
Floor resolution number two is now resolution 110. Floor resolution number three is waiving the rules for floor resolution number four.
So do you want to bring floor resolution number three, Supervisor Bramer?
May I move three through eight?
Can we do that?
Yep.
Motion by Supervisor Bramer to bring three through eight through the board. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions?
Okay, so floor resolution number three is now 111. Four is 112. Five is 113. Six is 114. Seven is 115. And eight is 116.
Okay. Got any of the resolutions in your pack, Supervisor Bramer?
I do have a roll call request on a couple first, if that's all right.
Sure.
68 and 89.
Okay. Anybody else? Supervisor Dresch.
Thank you, Chairman. A roll call on 62, as has been my practice since I've been up here, because it relates to services.
Okay. Any other requests or discussion on resolutions? Any public discussion? Supervisor Bramer, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I know that there are two resolutions at the back of your packet regarding the ARPA Chair Committee, and I'd be happy to defer to my other colleague, who is also one of the people in that resolution, but I would like to speak to it.
Okay, you want to speak now, or? Would you like to discuss it now, or?
I'm happy to defer to my colleague.
You referring to me?
Yes, the supervisor from Lake George.
I'm willing to discuss it.
What do you want to know?
Supervisor Bramer.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about the opportunity to be the chair of the ARPA committee. There's three reasons I'd like your support today. I have the energy, commitment, and communication skills to lead our committee in the way forward. I think all of us have the ability to lead a committee. Certainly, my colleague from the town of Lake George has many of those skills as well to be in front of us as far as a committee meeting. I am coming right off the NACO conference, where I was definitely re-energized to come back to the county and work hard for all of us, work hard for our residents. As many of you may know, as Personnel Chair, I attended probably, I'm going to say roughly 200 meetings last year, maybe even a little bit more than that. And so I certainly have the energy to get through all of those meetings. Now that I'm not Personnel Chair, I have a little bit more time on my hands. I have been nominated to the NISAC Climate Committee, but that committee actually only meets a couple times a year. So I still have plenty of time, lots of energy, to serve our county and make sure that we're moving this process forward. The second piece is commitment. I am committed to this process. I've been at it since the very beginning. I've gone to the trainings, as was mentioned. I have studied this handbook that was provided to us in the fall. I've reviewed the survey results that came in from the public, and I've looked at some of the information that is coming in from our stakeholders, not only in our community, but also from the county and particularly from our department heads like our treasurer. So I know what we have been after. There's been a fair, open, transparent process to get us to the point of distributing the funds. I know that it may seem like we haven't done a lot of that just yet, but we're on the cusp of doing that, and I'm going to hit the ground running and make sure that we are able to get those funds out working for the community as soon as possible. And the last piece is communication. I don't know about you guys, but I did not receive any communication from the Chair of our board when the press was alerted to the fact that someone else had been designated the Chair. I don't know about you guys, but I did not receive any communication from anyone else looking to be the ARPA Chair. I am disappointed in the lack of communication. We shouldn't be finding out things in the press. I do know that I reached out to many people asking for your support. I didn't get to all of you, and I apologize for that. But I would love your support today. And certainly, I will be available to you in the future as we go forward. I always have my phone on, and I always look at my emails, and I always respond to emails to the best of my ability. And I will certainly report back to this committee, I'm sorry, this board, with full reports about what we are doing as soon as we have resolutions ready to recommend to the Board for approval. So for all of those reasons, energy, commitment, and communication, I am asking for your support today. And vote for Resolution 114, which is for Bramer for Chair. Thank you.
Supervisor Dixon, do you have anything to add?
I accepted your offer to chair this committee. I've never not met my obligations for any of the chairs I've ever had. I have, with other supervisors, started a couple committees, dedicated, believe it or not, I'm still ambitious. And I don't see any reason not to have me chair this committee. I'm experienced at it, and I intend to give it my all. I've already had a good number of phone calls preparing to do just that. So I appreciate your offer, Claudia, but I look forward to working with you on the committee. Thank you.
Supervisor McGowan, discussion on resolutions.
Yes, on 114. I will be supporting Claudia Bramer's efforts to chair. I believe she has the skill set and the knowledge. She has been on that. There have been three ARPA meetings already, and Bramer has attended all three. Dickinson has not attended any one. Bramer has a 98.7% attendance rating on her meetings. Dickinson has a well, a 27% show rating. So I would have to say that Claudia Bramer is the better choice. I did extend myself out to the Chair once I heard this, and I think this is a very important committee to chair, and we need a huge leadership on this at $12.4 million. And I believe that Claudia is the person to have in the seat, so thank you.
Supervisor Saber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year, when this committee was created, we went out to the public and we asked them what they thought about spending those ARPA dollars. I am in full support of Supervisor from Glens Falls to chair the ARPA committee, specifically because she's put the time and the work and the attendance in. And I think showing up is half the battle, and then learning and being willing to look at different perspectives is another. And she continues to show that ability in every decision that she makes. I think it would be well-served by someone who has attended local, state, and national training. And I've heard many times in the paper regarding your appointments of positions that you like to try to put people with expertise in the right positions. But this position is not yours to put in. And that was made abundantly clear by our county attorney. It is the board's decision. And I would hope that this board would support putting a supervisor into that position that's willing to come to the table, roll up his or her sleeves, and get the job done. And with all due respect to the supervisor from Lake George, that didn't occur on this committee last year, even as a non-member. I think it's just too important, also with the other incredible responsibilities that supervisor from Lake George has on occupancy tax. I think that the time and the energy can be spent by a supervisor who is not appointed to another standing committee. And I would hope that this board would put political differences aside, or whatever other differences, and recognize the expertise and hard work of supervisors before us in this room to do the best job for the public. Thank you.
Any other comments? Supervisor Schraub.
Aren't we going to need a roll call vote, seeing as we have two different people to vote for, 109 and 114?
I think they're 110 and 114. Right.
110 and 114.
Roll call on 110 and 114.
Yes, please.
Okay. Supervisor Gisco, and then Supervisor Conover.
Thank you, Chairman. What I'm going to say is it's a little difficult, but I think it's warranted in saying. I will not, I'm going to tell you who I'm not going to be voting for, as opposed to who I will be voting for. I won't be voting for any card-carrying member of a group called, that I read in the media, of the Squad. Nor will I be voting for anyone who considers themselves to be a card-carrying member of the good old boys. I'm a 64-year-old man, so maybe I inherently are a member of that group. I'm sick and tired of cliques, middle school cliques, that exist on this Board of Directors. 20 bright, intelligent, hard-working people who swore to serve the public to the best of their abilities too often put these sides that shouldn't exist in this great institution. I'm going to be voting for, both individuals, in my opinion, are capable of doing an outstanding job. I'm going to be voting as I always do, not because anyone promised me anything. No one's ever promised me anything, nor have I taken anything. I've corresponded with individuals. I've never taken a penny from the public in order to be an elected official. There's never been a Ben Drusko, Friends of Ben Drusko thing. I do it out of my own interest in serving the public. I hope that each and every one of you will vote your conscience, vote for the person that may be just a little bit more dedicated, more energy to the process. And that's how I will be voting. Thank you.
Anybody else comment? Supervisor Conover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I will be voting for your recommendation, represented by Resolution 110, to appoint Mr. Dickinson. And I just would add, not to labor this, given the time of the day, that every municipality in this room is a recipient of ARPA funds. And that includes Lake George. Every supervisor in this room that's a recipient of ARPA funds has to be well-versed in ARPA. Many of the supervisors have been communicating regarding ARPA from when ARPA was first announced and first received. And oh, by the way, we're also going to be receiving ARPA funds, the other half of ARPA funds, next year. So I will be supporting and voting for Mr. Dickinson, represented in his appointment in Resolution 110. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any comments from the public, Don?
Hello, Chairman Garrity. No, there's nothing on YouTube.
Hey, I guess we vote on resolutions.
I.
Oh, we have comments?
102. 102? It was my understanding that we needed to get an insurance certificate on that one. I feel like it's kind of a moot point to even have this resolution when it's regarding allocation of occupancy tax funds to Winterfest. I don't know if anybody can answer.
It's not 102.
Oh, it's not 102? I'm sorry, which one was it, Dennis?
I was just trying to find it, and you said 102.
Was it 106? 106, I'm sorry.
What is the question on 106?
Did we ever get insurance from Winterfest? And is there even a point to addressing this resolution at this point in time?
I'll ask the county administrator. You know, 106.
County attorney? Yeah, I hope I'm stepping on the county attorney's feet this time. I spoke with Christian Dutcher. It was either yesterday or the day before, and he was still working to obtain insurance. He hasn't, the market has substantially hardened since last year, and the company that wrote the policy last year was unwilling to write the policy again. Christian's been actively shopping and is still engaged in that process.
Supervisor Dixon.
Ryan, are they doing the other functions of the Winterfest, or is it not doing anything?
No, Winterfest has been going on since the end of December last year, and I believe it goes through the end of February. Does that sound right? I believe it's only got a couple of weeks left.
So are they doing the wristband thing and all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the only thing that they're not doing are the events, motorized events?
They're doing everything.
Then what aren't they doing?
Well.
What's the insurance for?
Well, I think the answer, if I may, is the only thing that they're not doing is getting the $50,000 in county funds, because they're not meeting one of the preconditions for that contractual arrangement, which is they have insurance coverage of a sufficient amount as required by the county.
I'm totally confused. I think we spent too long on all that other stuff. So if they don't get insurance, they're not getting the money, but they've been running this thing since last year?
They've been running it this season.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's been operating and doing his thing like any other.
So if they don't get the insurance, so they're not going to get the $50,000?
That's, yeah, I mean, that's what the resolution is, and that's what the requirement is for every single entity which receives OCTAX funding.
Do they currently have insurance?
No.
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 I have a.
Do you want to answer?
Sure, yeah. The entity that puts this on has insurance. They put Americade on. But the question is, it's an insurance policy that will specifically cover these activities during Winterfest. And their existing insurance doesn't cover that, so they have to go out and get a separate special event insurance. Christian has insurance coverage between himself and all of the vendors that are participating. But the piece that he's been unable to get is the piece that the county requires.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Hogan.
Thank you. And could you confirm for me that in the contract last year with Winterfest, we had a payback clause? I'd like to know whether that's in this year's contract.
My understanding is there was a clawback or a payback clause in last year's version of the contract. I specifically did look for that provision, and it is not in the contract that was approved for this season.
Can we have?
Which wasn't, which wasn't signed, so.
Can I request a roll call on 106, please?
Sure. 106. Supervisor Thomas.
It sounds like to me that we could approve 106 with the hopes that Mr. Dutcher is successful in getting his insurance.
Good point.
Okay, Supervisor Bramer, have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On 112, which has to do with the replacement of the IDA member, I did send you the name of a businessperson from Glens Falls who has experience in the city. I was wondering if you reached out to that person or interviewed them.
I have not, because the recommendation came from Washington County, and I didn't have, I have not had a chance to reach out to the one.
Okay, I would like roll call on 112, please.
Sure. Supervisor Wild.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm going back to 106, and this is Winterfest. It was a very successful event last year. We're asking us to make a decision in terms of whether this is going to go forward in the future. I'm not sure, I have enough information to say, what are the risks if we don't have this? Because, like I said, I think the whole business community would say that it was a successful event last year. Are we just going to toss this aside and say, there's no insurance, and we can't find a way to make this work? I like there from the other supervisors, that my understanding was a really positive event last year. And what we're saying is, we're just going to toss it aside? By not approving this, by approving this resolution, we're going to toss it aside, basically?
No.
No.
It's going on. Talking about tossing it aside, the question is whether we can get the insurance. Supervisor Hogan, do you want to respond?
Thank you. It's happening. It's happening right now. And yes, it is a very positive thing. I asked for a roll call, just to clarify, for two reasons. One, I don't have a clear understanding of what our liability is to fund something that doesn't have insurance. And I haven't really, I don't know as we need to pass. What I was saying is, I don't know as we need this resolution today. It's happening anyway without our funding. So, you know, if we want to start funding things retroactively, that's fine, but that's a committee-level discussion. That's not really a discussion for here and today. I just kind of feel like this resolution is unnecessary. And then the second piece of it is, I have absolutely no idea how or why that clawback clause ever got removed. And in fact, in committee, I did ask whether that clawback clause was there, and I was told that yes, it was. So I'm a little confused on that, too. That's all.
Supervisor Wild.
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's all about to me consequences right now. You've got someone who doesn't have insurance. We're offering to give them or take back $50,000. What are the consequences to the county if we do or do not pass this?
If I could just clarify, we're not taking back $50,000. We're not going to be. The entity is not able to sign the contract and meet the term conditions because they don't have the proper insurance that's required for the contract. So therefore, they won't be receiving the money from the county, and the county will not be creating a potential liability through funding the events that occur at the Lake George Winterfest. The purpose for the insurance is not to protect Lake George Winterfest, but to protect the county from any lawsuits that derive from that entity's activities during Winterfest. And nothing I'm saying is meant to suggest that they create a liability. I'm attempting to answer the question posed, which is, without the insurance coverage to protect the county, the county is not per the contract, entering into the contract, or extending the money to them.
Supervisor Dixon.
I want to make it perfectly clear, as Administrator Moore has said, they have insurance. They have insurance for all these events. They just are unable to get the county included on that insurance. So that's the drawback. They have insurance, they're having the events. The second thing I want to point out is, this is a grassroots organization. This is the Lake George business people getting together and anting up and starting this Winterfest thing. It's been very successful. And if they don't get the $50,000, my knee-jerk reaction is they'll probably stop doing it. They've already anted up money. It's not like they didn't put any money into it. They put money and effort into it. And it's really well organized, and it's very successful. I would be very disappointed if we lose it.
Supervisor Bramer, and then Supervisor Conover.
Thank you. I think actually everyone is saying the same thing. We're trying to make sure they're not losing the opportunity for the $50,000. So I think what my colleague from Johnsburg said is a good recommendation. Let's not pass this today, because it sounds like that's reallocating it back into the OCTAX, which we don't want to do, it sounds like. We want to just leave it available for them once they get their insurance, which hopefully happens. Is that not what we're doing? Okay. Never mind.
I don't believe so. Supervisor Conover.
I may be misreading this, but I believe what's happening here is that these were funds that were appropriated and approved in 2021. We're now in 2022.
Right.
And so what this is doing is it's saying that it's re-appropriate, and it uses the words to re-appropriate, that these $21 in '22 so that we can expend them in 2022. Because without that resolution, it doesn't say that you're waiving the insurance. It doesn't say you're waiving anything. Here I see the county administrator shaking his head, yes. And maybe he needs to amplify on this level. So nobody's, what it's saying is that because we didn't enter into the agreement in 2021, we hadn't entered into the contractual agreement, then we could disperse the dollars when we dispersed the dollars. But because we could not enter into the agreement in 2021, the dollars are being appropriate, have to be re-appropriated in 2022. That does not mean that we're waiving anything here. I don't see anything here that says that we're waiving any insurance requirements. Well, Todd, but ask, if you would, Mr. Chairman, we could ask the county administrator a comment.
Yeah, and to go back to Supervisor Thomas's point, there's two elements of approval here that the Board of Supervisors does with an event like this. One is to provide the appropriation from which to pay the bill. And two is to approve, authorize the contract, which actually triggers the payment. So all we would be doing here. So all we would be doing here is providing the $50,000 to pay the bill when the day comes that the bill would be paid. Right now, the bill being paid is contingent upon an insurance requirement that Christian is still attempting to, to fulfill. But th- this resolution does not trigger payment. It does not trigger, you know, dispensing with that insurance requirement.
Supervisor Wild.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for the attorney. Yes or no? No matter what we do with this resolution today, is the county liable to be sued?
No.
So if we pull it out, if we leave it in, is there, are we at any consequential risk? Because we've supported this in the past, and now we know, you know, a month after he's been running this event, we're going to pull back our money. Are we at risk?
No.
Not at all?
Anybody can sue anybody. The question is, what are the merits of that lawsuit? And as the county attorney, who's required to defend the county and its actions, as of today, there is no liability I can identify to Lake George Winterfest for the 2022 season.
Supervisor Hogan.
Thank you for one more opportunity. I think I've been unclear. My, my, my issue is not with the reappropriation. It is not with Winterfest. My issue is, is with the elements of the contract. Number one, starting to put in contingencies like insurance becoming available seems like a slippery slope. But number two, and more importantly to me, is the clawback phrase that was there last year and is not there this year.
That's an excellent point. It's an excellent concern, and it's one I would be more than happy to speak with the supervisor about individually and then have a larger conversation by committee and even by the board. As approved by the county attorney is a phrase I see over and over and over again in many resolutions. There's some benefits to that phrase, and there's some detriments to that phrase. I think that phrase needs to be quantified better. Because the county attorney's office cannot create material terms to a contract different than what's approved by a committee. So there has to be a larger discussion and a better understanding, and maybe some guidance from my office as to what are standard terms and what are not standard terms that would either need to be negotiated or approved by the committee and then the board. Basically, what should be in the resolution and what shouldn't be in the resolution.
Supervisor Leggett.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This came out of our committee finance. There are two resolves on it. One, that hereby reappropriate funds, not exceed $50,000, and resolve the budget for 2022 is amended accordingly. This resolution does not deal anything with contracts, and just to be clear, this is all about reappropriating funds that were not taken last year so that they can be this year. Thank you.
Supervisor Mariano, you had a question?
Yeah, the only thing I can add to this is that I know, number one, there's only two weeks left. It's this weekend and next weekend, number one. Number two, way back about, maybe two weeks ago, they were saying they had collected, or sold 70 of those wristbands to collect the money to. So why it's not in the contract, I really don't know, but I think it should be something that should be put in before we finish it. But the insurance, to the last I knew, that they couldn't get the insurance for the whole event, but they were using some of the insurance from Americade and trying to get insurance companies to pay one week here, another insurance company, but I haven't heard anything since. So I, I can't give you an answer.
Any other discussions on resolutions? Supervisor Leggett.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 112, this is appointment of Charles Barton III to the IDA. I am vice chairman of the IDA. I've sat on it now for seven years. Would like to give thanks to Michael J. Grasso for being on that board and serving for the length of time that he did. We will miss his participation and his knowledge that he brought to the IDA and the CDC. And we have had a chance to talk with Mr. Barton and see him at, at meetings as, as well. And I wholeheartedly support this resolution. That's before us, resolution number 112.
All right, let's, Supervisor.
Yeah, could we take 110 and 114 and make it into one vote? So I have two separate votes. That's for the ARPA chairperson. Could we just, we go around the room, we take a vote, and we either say Claudia or Dennis.
There are two separate resolutions.
I'd like to make a, a, a motion that we combine the two. I can do that, can't I, Amanda?
You'd have to essentially withdraw one.
Okay, I'd like to.
Draw one, but then we'd have to renumber the rest when you withdraw that.
Supervisor Thomas.
It makes, it's just common sense. It makes sense.
Supervisor Thomas.
I object because I want to vote for both of them.
Thank you, my colleague from Stoney Creek.
From Stoney, Stoney Creek. Okay. You want to vote for both?
All right, let's vote on resolutions. Can we move?
Please.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, Amanda has some.
So first off, on resolution 68, that's amending the rules of the board. You may have noticed on here that the April board meeting is set for April 15th, which is Good Friday. Do you want to leave it on that day, or would you like to move it back to April 14th?
Move it back.
Motion amended 68 to move the April 15th meeting to April 14th. Is that a motion, Mr. Wild?
Yes, I'll make that motion. It's Thursday instead of Friday.
Supervisor Bruno.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right.
Is amended. Also, is there any objection to combining some of the roll call votes? Say maybe for 90 through 95, have one vote, and then one for 97 through 103?
I'll make that record motion for both of what you just suggested.
Motion by Supervisor Brady, second by Supervisor Dixon. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, all right, can we vote now? Sorry, Mike.
Resolution 89 concerning the pay, authorizing call-in pay. I would just like to make the statement that during the, the break that I had, I contacted Mark Stevens, who is the chief legal counsel for the Controller's Office, and he point-blank said that retroactive is not acceptable. Thank you.
Supervisor Mariano, did you have something?
Just, I, I mean, we bounced off of 106, I think it was. Did we come up with any other suggestions? And the only reason I'm mentioning it, and I, I know that the treasurer's here and he's going to know what I'm going to say, but at the end of last year, we, we went $2.4 million in occupancy tax money over the year before. And just to let everybody know, to collect $2.4 million in tax, $60 million had to be spent in our county to collect that kind of money. And I think if we make a wrong decision on the rest of this 106, we could lose the support of some of the people to keep running that, to bring in the, the OCTs.
Okay, who voted? Supervisor Hogan.
Does 89 need to be a roll call?
What number?
Oh, is it already?
We already did.
89.
89 is a roll. Oh, Supervisor Wild, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I just reflected on, on the conversation from our treasurer. Do we need to modify Resolution 89? To remove the retroactive?
Are you making that a motion?
Uh, yes, I am.
We have a motion. We have a second by Supervisor Conover to remove the retroactive, but then to vote on a resolution as written. Removing retroactive. Any further discussions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed the 89? No? Okay. I think we can do it. Okay, now can we vote?
Please. I'm sad.
Resolution number 40, making supplemental appropriations. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 41, amending Warren County budget for 2022. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 62, appointing members of professional advisory committee for the Health Services Department. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Abstain or recuse.
Mrs. Frazier?
I'm sorry. I'm confused. Which one are we on, Amanda?
It's number 62, appointing members of the Professional Advisory Committee for Health Services.
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution number 68, altering the standing rules of the Board of Supervisors as just amended. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yeah.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 85, which is amending table of organization. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 89, authorizing call-in rate for Director of Public Health and Patient Services as amended. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolutions 90 through 95 for all finance, looks like all appropriating funds and increasing capital projects and such. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yeah.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolutions all passed. And 97 through 103. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Resolution 104, authorizing appropriation of funds from the occupancy tax reserve to the tourism budget. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Marleano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 105, authorizing reappropriation of funds from the occupancy tax reserve to the tourism budget. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Marleano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 106, authorizing reappropriation of funds from the occupancy tax reserve to the tourism budget. Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bramer?
Abstain.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Girasi?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Abstain for lack of clarity.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Marleano?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Abstain.
Ms. Seber?
Abstain.
Mr. Beatty?
Abstain.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yeah.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
That resolution passes with a vote of 556 in favor. Okay, resolution, let's see, we're on to 110, which is amending resolution 12 of 2022, reappointing members to the ARPA advisory committee to fill a vacancy due to resignation. Mr. Diamond?
Just, I got a question on that.